Now, uh. We're live. It is, um, tonight, we're gonna have the pledge of visions by American heritage girls. I will give them a brief, um, introduction after the pledge. We're also gonna have a moment of silence for Frank E. Matt Senior, who was first president and first chief civil like Silver Lake Fire Department. Charles Watson, Circleville Fire Commissioner, and also the town of Walk Hill Redlands, victim of the shooting at the University of Virginia and University of, I don't know. Um, can we have the young ladies, American heritage girls, please step up? How about we stand? Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Great job. Hold on, ladies, one, two, three. History on the young ladies who are ready. Our pledge today, founded by a group of parents behind a big face scout type character development program of their daughters in nineteen ninety-five. It's dedicated to the mission of building meaning of integrity through service to God, family, community, and country. Today, there are troops in every state and fifteen countries around the world. Our local group is based on Circleville. They have approximately twenty-two young ladies. They plan camping, educational, artistic trips, like the nearest one where they will be planning a trip to see the Nutcracker. The troop coordinator for troop one zero four one out of Circleville is Jackie Donald. Thank you. Can I have a question? Hearing? Well, can you read the announcement? Your recognition of the, thank you. I make a motion to open the public hearing. And sitting in for our town clerk today is the deputy, uh, town clerk Mercedes.
Countywoman noticed the public hearing. Please take notice that the children's gathering is well to the point seven two. Public hearing will be held by the town board or the town walk here on the number sixteen, twenty twenty-three, by seven twenty-five P. M. and ninety-nine powered ride for the name of the county. Who considered the acquisition part of the real property of the county, currently owned by Randy Jacobson to utilize for preservation of all the spaces in the area. Task map number two dash one dash twenty-eight and thirty-two, which you gave the road, Lubbock, New York. Please say further notice that any resident in the town walk here is entitled to the first and essential public hearing. The town of Walk Hill will make every effort to ensure the hearing is acceptable to citizens with disabilities. Anyone required in special assistance and or legal authorization should participate in the town press conference at two four five, six nine two, seven eight hundred. But although the town of Walk Hill, New York, they are covered nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, the defending grasses, and.
Thank you. Mr. Supervisor for the resident, it's Steve Chu, Mr. Garcia, today. The public hearing notice was posted and published in accordance with law. And the town board now proceed to discuss the acquisition.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, this is a property that town is looking to acquire to keep some open space, touches the kill. And then the, uh, more time good is to create the space so that our residents can go to the kill. Um, the goal will be actually open to the public. I want to know about anyone on the board, have them be saying, no, so, um, Johnson.
Uh, thanks Supervisor. So I would just like to add too, that, um, if anybody's ever kayaked on that section of the kill, um, there's a series of protect that are concerned, species that are there, the divine, uh, the bald eagles, uh, blue herons, there's the North American wood turtle, spotted turtle. You actually see all those if you kayak, kayak, hack off the kills. Um, you know, from on the banks and shoulders. There was a time I was there actually with my kids and, uh, there was an eagle that had come down to catch fish like right in front of us, sort of like twenty feet away. So they're like landing right there over your head, grab the fish, run it. And at first it was kind of cool, we thought there was just three, but it was actually like an adult, probably a female. We showed them two younger ones had a fish. So after she grabbed one, she flew up, dropped it, and it was two down, grab, and that was all happening like this is we are from, you know, you guys to myself. So it was pretty amazing. You know, so such an amazing place, I think it's important to do, to kind of preserve the quality there. You know, like those, for those species too, not just water quality in the future, but, you know, stuff like that. So I think this is, this is awesome. Um, you can even have like an eagle watching, preserving some of these places at some point where you could go and, you know, be in a little hut. Like if you went to, um, Rio, and everyone done that, they have people watching locations where you can sit there and observe that one shore, not having to kayak out this train. So, I don't know, I think this is just great of me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Maya?
Uh, I just have a question, did you do an appraisal first? I didn't get it, I didn't get a copy of it.
I believe we've got, uh, up to the back of the month. No, we didn't do a full, full appraisal, I think we got some broker's statements.
Oh, under pause. Okay, you can send me that then.
I'll, I'll double check to be sure. Or actually, on this one way, did we just use the appraised value that the assessor had? I believe, I believe we, we did it based on our break on the, um, the twenty-two assessment, do I understand correctly?
Uh, not much to say other than to echo what Thompson and Johnson said. You know, this is an opportunity for us as a town to acquire, um, open space for the residents. And, um, the kids that were just here get to, uh, go out there and explore, um, nature's beauty and things that they typically wouldn't see on, on a normal day. So it's an opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hallman?
Yeah, so this idea of protecting the kill began with Supervisor Pupute. Um, we had, uh, passed a law stating you couldn't build within, I, I, I forget now, is it, is it a hundred feet or two hundred feet of the kill? And, um, since he's, since he left, uh, Councilman Johnson has really picked up the torch with this and just want to say appreciate that because it's, it's important to, to everybody in the community that the water is protected, that land along that water is, uh, protected as well. So, um, good job. Eric.
Thank you. Now, Will?
Just so I can note for the record, so everyone's aware, um, it's not every instance is the town required to have a public hearing to acquire a real property in this case, because it's going to be used for open space. Um, and public funds are being utilized. When the general municipal on two forty-seven, we are required to have the public hearing. The contract has already been signed. We've received the title report, but we can't go forward with the closing until such time as you have this public hearing. And if there are any objections raised by the public that, um, the board deems so, um, determinative that they want to go, not go forward with the sale, that's the purpose of the public hearing, Phil. Uh, we appreciate anyone who has any public power. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you, Will. Open up to the audience. Come up, state your name, address.
Over to the Rockbomber Road. So as one of my questions was, was there any appraisal done? I mean, doing a little bit of research, it looks like you're looking to spend a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the property. The, the home most likely will need to be ripped down. And paying a hundred and fifteen thousand, if you go on the parcel search, the actual value of the property looks to be about a hundred and five thousand with a home on it. Now, if you're gonna be ripping the home down, the property value itself is roughly thirty-two thousand dollars. So if you didn't have a home on it, have you calculated the cost of carrying a property down? And then preparing the property to become a park? Cause you're not, you're spending a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a piece of land that's worth thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, rather than spending that money on a piece of property, which is two hundred feet of frontage on a eighty mile long river, maybe we should be looking at taking that money to fix our infrastructure. Sewers in my neighborhood, every single one of them is collapsing, I've been a grand tearing up yours. Uh, how about if we fix the water contamination issue we've got in town? We got a whole bunch of problems with the, the water districts with water contamination. I think this is a waste of money at a time that we really need to deal with infrastructure we currently have. Instead of opening this up, buying a piece of land for way too much money. And then it's gonna sit there like the property behind it, number fifty-four, that still hasn't been approved or set up to be used as parkland or access to the river. So those would be two properties that are not going to be usable until we actually put the money into them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
I'm in, you know, Brian, and I just want to thank you for sharing. I think you can do both. I think making a false choice and saying, you know, we shouldn't do preservation because it's gonna take money out on, uh, something else that needs to be done. But something else that needs to be done is that the constant land is not going to be something that we can actually preserve later. So I want to thank you guys for doing that because I love eagles as well. I love that connection, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Make a motion to close the public hearing. All the favor? Thank you. Now we move on. So today, one of the things, uh, we've been looking at and working partnership is that Orange County has been developed and been part of this destination. And Town Walk Hill, we're right in the middle, right in the middle of it all. Um, county except for others, the economic engine of Orange County. Um, so I go with, I said, you know, it's good, you know, there's a lot of film coming up here. And we've had, you know, we've been looking up in the last, um, six, seven months, we've had a couple of shows and we had, uh, the restaurant guy coming up, so it's coming. So why can't we be part of it? So with Orange County Tourism, we've been able to, um, try and develop this partnership where we're going to showcase the town. And today we have the Orange County Tourism, what's your title? I think you're the commissioner?
No, whatever you want me to speak.
Okay. You run the, um, um, tourism. Orange County, she also is a local resident. And, um, they're not doing great things. And today they're gonna do a presentation to town. And we're looking forward to take this partnership in the long, and then come back. Amanda, Amanda Dana, Assistant Nation.
Rachel Carr, yeah. I always, uh, didn't care for this, so I have, cause I know, to you all, and I always feel like I shouldn't, my math, too. Can I turn just a little bit? Okay. So we'll, we'll do it this way, so, thank you. And this is Rachel Carr, she is our tourism coordinator, um, she is the next in command at the tourism office. And she does a lot, I should tell you. Um, for many, many years, uh, one of my predecessors, she was the tourism coordinator for the county. And, uh, that position was filled by Rachel. And I'm the director of, uh, tourism and film. So I just want to let you know that, and we'll talk more about film. But thank you very much, and we have a presentation here, and I think it's gonna fill up without a hitch. We'll see, technology one-on-one here. Um, but again, Amanda Dana, I am the Director of Tourism, I, um, been here for four and a half years in the county. But I am no stranger to the county, and yes, I do live in the town of Walk Hill, up on Baldwin Hill. And, um, I also had five years of economic development in Orange County as well. So I, I guess I consider to be a lifer, I'm a lifer here, so. Um, but let's kick into Orange County Tourism and Film. Um, we are incredibly busy. I don't know if that's, anyone's shocked by that, but we are very busy. We are considered a destination by many in the state. Um, I'm just gonna wait for this gentleman to catch up. There we go. Um, I'll, I'll, uh, forward the slide, please. So we'd like to start off by talking about who we are and our team. We are a lean team of five folks. Sorry if my math is to you all. Um, but we are a lean team of five folks, soon to be six. And we do manage right now about a budget of about two point five million dollars. And which is wonderful because we get to spend that money on good things in the county and promoting the county. We are the promoting arm of the county, and we'll get to that. So that slide right there shows our five fabulous ladies there. And we, uh, did, what was it, um, Plano Friday? We did that, and we did some social media on that. So that's a picture of us in front of our ninety-nine Main Street, um, building in the Village of Goshen. Okay, we'll dance that. Okay, so on this slide, you can see that, um, we do many things at the Orange County Tourism Office. But mainly, we are that marketing arm. As you can see, we played on the word arm there, we are the marketing arm of Orange County. Uh, we also do, do advocacy towards tourism projects when needed. And we also align projects to, um, resources if they need it, whether that be, um, connections to municipal leaders or to resources such as the sentence and things of that nature. So we also connect, make the connections there as well. All right, next slide. So how do we do this? How do we market? How do, uh, how do we get the word out that Orange County is open for business? And we would love to have some tourists here, and we love to have tourism projects, so how do we do this? Okay, next slide. Okay, and now what I'm going to do is turn it over to Rachel. She's gonna talk a little bit about some of the marketing that we do, starting with our print.
Hi, everyone. Um, so the first thing that we're gonna talk about how we market Orange County is through print media. And if you look at the screen, the top two pictures are different ads that we have done. The top left is our craft beverage, um, trail that we started, did that initiative this year. And that is an ad in the Hudson Valley Wine Magazine. And on the right side is an ad that we partnered with Lego Land, and that is in the Toronto Globe. So we do, um, we are in print media and with how technology is advancing, um, we're, we make sure to still stay relevant in, in the print area. Um, in addition to ads and articles, we work with travel writers. So we weekly get, um, emails, uh, regarding different articles that travel writers are looking to do. And what we, what our office does is we try and connect them with different, um, attractions, restaurants, people in Orange County that we think would be a good fit. And we try and give them as much information as possible, pictures, contact information, description, so that we can form that connection. And hopefully there'll be an article written about them, and then they'll be publicized that way. And then, oh, my, yes. Um, so I'm holding in my hand our travel guide. Has anyone gotten this before this meeting? Oh, no. Well, they are flying off the racks. Um, we distribute seventy-five thousand of these each time we print a travel guide. So this is the twenty-twenty-one version, and we are currently working on the twenty-twenty-three edition, which will be out in the spring, and we're really excited about it. We're updating listings, we're getting new ads in there. Um, so that's something to look out for. But this is a great resource for people that are looking to visit the area and people that live here. Um, because it just has so much information. It has lodging, parks, attractions, restaurants, craft beverage. Um, and it even has a map that we made.
When was that? Two thousand twenty. Two thousand upgraded last year.
Yes, so you will have to check it out. Um, inside, it is a big map insert that you can pull out. And it just shows everything inside of Orange County. Um, so we give these, we, um, distribute them directly to consumers. So someone can go on our website, click the button requesting one, we'll mail one to them directly. And then we also work with, uh, distributors that supply them, um, through the New York brewway, through I ninety-five in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and all the way to Delaware. So this is widely distributed, it's very useful. And, um, like I said, this is flying off the rack. And, oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll get it out so that I can, I'll be getting one in the climate. Um, but in the middle, we have two billboards. I'm not gonna ask if anyone has seen these, but they are right on, um, I eighty-six. So our goal is to get people that are driving through to see these billboards and to stop, pull off the highway, possibly eat at a restaurant, decide to stay over, check out one of our breweries. Um, so this is part of our initiative to increase, uh, midweek stays and, and really get people that are driving by to, to know that we're here and what we have to offer. And lastly, on, in the lower right-hand corner, you can see that we partner with transportation hubs. And it's really hard to see in that picture, but it will be really easy to see at New York Stewart Airport. We are putting up a huge installation at forty-one feet by nine feet, I believe. And it is just an, a huge advertisement for Orange County. So that when people get into the airport and they're possibly going to the city or to another county, that they can see what we have to offer, um, that we have, uh, four season activities for everybody and, and some of our top attractions. So that is print media, and we can move on to the next slide, which is our digital marketing. And because technology has become so prevalent, um, this is where we focus a lot of attention. Um, so the first thing on there, which is kind of part of you guys in the audience to see, is orange tourism dot org. And that's our website. And if you have not been there, I highly recommend that you check it out. Because like our travel guide, it has all of the resources in Orange County. So, um, one of the big things, one of the pages that people often go to is our events page. And people submit events that are going on in the county, and we're possible, well, not possibly, we're always coming through to see what events are going on that we can add to that page so that people can know what's going on. Um, and it's all organized by calendar, so you can check by date. And, um, so on this screen, the top two images are our e-blasts. And that really correlates with our website. So, um, every week we send out an e-blast. Uh, it goes to all county employees, our municipalities, and to our, um, email list, which is over six thousand. And we let them know about some events going on that weekend. And the top two have, um, each of them have something going on in the town of Walk Hill. So one is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday bash. And the other is, uh, the circus going on at the gallery this weekend. So, um, that's pretty big. And when you click on it, uh, when you open your email, you're able to click on the picture, and it will take you right to the event page on our website, which has more information and a link so that you can then go to the Facebook page or go, um, to the website. Um, we also have a really strong Google Ad Word campaign and, uh, search engine campaign that we, we utilize Google, which is the largest, uh, search engine out there. Um, and then we get to social media, which is something that we, um, very, very large for us. Uh, we're on Instagram, Facebook, uh, Twitter. And we will be, the exciting news is we will be starting a TikTok account very soon. So be on the lookout for that.
Johnny and Rachel dancing.
No, I promise. Um, so we, that's just another way, um, it's becoming increasingly, uh, that people go online or on Facebook or on social media to find out about different events. And I know I'm one of those people that if I hear about something, that's where I go to find out about it. So we think that it's important to have a big online, um, social media presence. And, um, and so that's another place where we like to promote what's going on in Orange County. Um, and then what's really exciting, this past fall, we, uh, did our first radio campaign, or I should say, um, the beginning of us having commercials on Z one hundred and Light FM. So we had, uh, spots, those are two of the most listened to radio stations in the New York metropolitan area. And in addition to that, we also did a thirty-second commercial. And that was aired on CBS and on ABC. And we have, um, the commercial that we hope will work. So that's our commercial. Very exciting, and, um, it is the, our first, our first. Yeah. Um, so that's our first commercial. We've. Yeah. Um, so that's our first commercial. We filmed that. And we are in the process of filming about four more different videos. So we have uh big plans for twenty-twenty-three. And.
Okay, so another way that we market is we go to trade shows, right? So there's two types of trade shows. There's consumer, which is folks like you coming to a show saying, I wanna go on vacation. Where do I go? And we're there and all over the country pretty much, uh, from Philadelphia, Massachusetts, uh, out west, Chicago, you name it. We're all over the place uh showing what Orange County has to offer. And the second type of trade show we go to is mostly industry trade, which we talk to travel writers, uh, people that do group tours, things of that nature, so that we're trying to get that side of the business in as well. So um, we have a very robust schedule for next year, as you can see, just a few of them on there. You can't see that. And if anyone wants this slideshow, we'll gladly get it out to them as well. I know it's a little difficult to see this. Next slide, please. Okay, so what else do we do? We do presentations for groups. Um, some of the ones we're doing lately uh are for chambers or for Leadership Orange. Uh, we've done some presentations to Rotary Clubs, historians. Um, and uh, we also had a good uh, then we did an economic development summit. We were present presenting there. So uh, we do that quite a bit and Rachel's getting pretty good at it now, so watch out. She's gonna be on the trail. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so let's bring us back to Town of Walk Hill. What does Town of Walk Hill have? Why is it so great? Why is it that engine that we talk about? Let's talk a little bit about what goes on here. Thank you. Okay, so it's no shock that we have a plethora of hotels that people like to come to. This is a very good place for people to get off the highway. It is very centrally located in Orange County. And you can pretty much get to anywhere you want pretty easily from the Town of Walk Hill. There's nine hotels right here and there's three in planning right now. Um, has anyone tried to or had people try to get hotel rooms on the weekends in the Town of Walk Hill and surrounding area? And said, sorry, we're booked. Has that ever happened to anyone? Yes, it has, quite a bit. We do need more rooms. Um, and we are thankfully, Town of Walk Hill and other towns are now in planning with more rooms. Um, we're probably in target to get to about another thousand rooms by next year and a half. We have about thirty-eight hundred units, it's called. And that's just hotel motel. And then we have about close to eight hundred units for Airbnb, so throughout the county. So um, we do need more and uh we're working on that and helping those projects move along. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. So some other great things about Town of Walk Hill is we have a lot of events going on there because we have event spaces. Um, the Barn at Villa Venencia, very popular wedding destination and other types of venues. I'm actually going there soon for an event. I think the partnership event's gonna be there soon. Um, going there, very lovely space. Also Villa Venencia, the original, um, is um a very, very place for events. Uh, West Hills Country Club, again, another place. And of, and of course, the.
Okay, would you mind going back a little? Okay, so we were talking about the Galleria and how it has been able to transition um to not just being a shopping and retail space, but also uh capitalize on experiences. And with the addition of Urban Air, Round One, Philly Bees, um, and the, the um upgrades done to AMC Movie Theater. People now, it makes it more of a destination where people are going to come. And um, just for example, if someone is uh visiting and they are staying at Lego Land, spending the day at Lego Land on Saturday, staying over and looking for something to do on Sunday afternoon before they go home, taking the kids to Round One is a great way to just expand how long, what they do here, how long they stay. So um, the gallery is is definitely uh an attraction here. And if you wouldn't mind, so the next thing that I wanna talk about is sports tourism, which is starting to take off in the Town of Walk Hill. And um, this is a great way to bring in um more tourism. And uh, we have in the Town of Walk Hill, uh Blue Sky Sports Complex, Baller Field, and Vault Rock. And those uh venues offer the Town of Walk Hill the ability to have tournaments and competitions that would not regularly be bringing people into this area. Um, and for example, this past weekend, uh Baller Field had New York State Soccer Competition happening. And, oh, the boys, just the boys. Um, and then at uh Blue Sky, they also had a soccer competition, which had fifty soccer teams playing. And on each of those teams are twenty men, twenty players. So right there alone at Blue Sky, with that one tournament, that brought in a thousand kids, not including the parents that drove them or the family that came to support them. Um, and so when you think about a thousand people coming in for one event and them staying, staying here, you know, a, a majority of them stayed overnight for the two-day competition. Um, you think about how that impacts hotels, how that impacts lodging. And then from the hu- um hospitality and lodging industry, it just kind of rippled out through the town because those people come and they eat here, they shop here, they look for things to do here while they're in between tournaments. And they buy their gas here. So it is a huge opportunity for the Town of Walk Hill. And um, I'm gonna pass that one.
And um, one of our, one of our strategies has been how do we build the business on midweek and in shoulder seasons? And there's two things that we'll talk about. One is a, a conference center, which we're actively working on right now to um, uh engage in a feasibility study to see what part of or what parts of Orange County would be the best economic impact for a conference center. What do conference centers do? Just to talk a little bit about that and it ties into sports, but conference centers are midweek, right? So conferences start till PM Sunday or Monday and they end by Thursday. And that's what we really need. So we feel that these conference centers that would come here can build that midweek um business. Additionally, our shoulder seasons, everyone know what the shoulder season is here? Wanna guess? January, February, woo, parts of March, right? So I think that spring is starting later, but that's just my opinion. But those seasons are considered shoulder seasons in Orange County or in the Northeast. Um, I can only say thank God we're not in Buffalo right now. I mean, it's, it's unhappy to be where I am right now. Um, but I can tell you that if we have indoor facilities, like the proposed indoor facility at Twelfth Rock, that will bring in um shoulder season visitors, so to speak. So that's a great thing. Okay, can we?
Can we just?
Oh, yes, I forgot about that. So what we do is we partner with these um tournament operators, whether it be Twelfth Rock or Baller Field or Blue Sky. And we made these wrap cards so that people come in, they're like, oh, what do I do? Where do I go? And they can scan the QR code and it'll give you some options for dining or staying, um, or even attractions. So they just scan these cards when they come in and they find places to go and things to do. But we make, we help make these for the uh tournament. You can take a look at those if you want. Okay, sorry about that, Rachel. Um, okay, so we're gonna get into um, into film. Um, we, we, we could talk all night about tourism, but I know we're in a limited time, but let's get into, into film. Film is big business in Orange County, you betcha. And let me just give you a quick history on that. Um, in New York City, where largely a lot of the films are in LA, um, during COVID, um, film production didn't stop. But what happened is that New York City was way behind the Hudson Valley for, for opening. Remember the opening schedules we had? Everyone's saying, oh, not open yet, can't get my nails done yet. You know, we're doing all those things. But up here in Hudson Valley, we opened. And so what happened is producers and directors, they came up to the Hudson Valley and they kept filming up here. And they said, hmm, they really like it here. Cause it takes me about an hour to get from Midtown to Brooklyn, but it takes me an hour to get up here and film as well. So we became very attractive to the production industry. Okay, just giving you a snapshot of some of the things that are going on here now. Poker Face, has anyone heard of Poker Face? Yes, okay. Poker Face has been here for ten months with an average location budget of four hundred thousand dollars a month. We like them. And what happens here is Poker Face anchored in Newburgh in a soundstage. And when you anchor with a soundstage, you just stick around that area and you keep spending that money all around the area. Poker Face is here, Theater Camp, We're Here, we'll talk a little bit about that. Lots of commercials, BMW is one of them. Uh, Vivian Lock and Truck, um Chevy commercials. And Restaurant Impossible was here, guys. Did you guys know about that? Which is about the street here was really, really wonderful. See that? I actually went there after that. I just, the food is wonderful there. Uh, okay, next, next slide. So these are some of the production companies that are hovering here and looking to come here. Apple, Netflix, Prime, HBO, and Nike. Okay, let's go from there. Whoa, look at that. Uh, We're Here is a series that was uh, that picked out Pine Island um area to film. They were just here a couple of months ago. It's a fun little uh show on HBO. It's a series. And so it's uh called We're Here. It's uh, it's very funny, actually. So look it up if you can. Um, next slide. Oh, yeah, next slide, please. So here's Poker Face and Poker Face is right here at the fairgrounds, right, at this, uh, the racetrack. And um, does anyone wanna guess how many extras they hired that day they were here, the two days? Wanna guess? Oh, you already were. Fantastic. Thank you for supporting. Three hundred and fifty extras were hired for that scene, for those scenes that were there. Um, and thank you. And what is your first name? Hi Lily, thank you for doing that. Was it fun?
Yeah, I did try that because of Newburgh, the glow.
Oh, you did? Look at you! Um, so um, they, they were here and they, they spent a lot of time here and there. I think George is up there somewhere in that picture, if my eyes serve me correctly. Um, but it was, it was great to see all the economic development happening and filming going on here. Okay, I will take the next slide. This is another film that filmed last year and premiered on October eighth. Um, Pinball, The Man That Saved The Game, that's uh, that's actually a great little movie. I did see it at the premiere. Um, does anyone know that Pinball was illegal in New York State in the nineteen thirties? It was. And it's a story about that. It's actually a little bit of a comedy and uh we love seeing that. That was filmed exclusively in Orange County. Um, next, okay. So who likes Hallmark? You all do. Even the men in the room, don't say you don't like it. You do like it. And um, it is the Hallmarks year. They were here three times. This was the second movie that was filmed here. Um, and that was um, that was uh last year that was filmed. Uh, and that's going to be uh premiering November twenty-seven. We're gonna play the trailer. I don't know if it's gonna work though, Eric. What do you think? That's right, Hallmark, November twenty-seventh at eight o'clock. And that uh, the soundstage was Manhattan and Newburgh and the, and the locations were in Warwick and Newburgh. If you saw a lot of nineteen fifties cars out in the streets and stuff, that's because Hallmark was here filming. And that was great to be working on that one. And you worked really hard with them. Um, next slide, please. Okay, The Whale. Has anyone heard of this movie, The Whale? Brendan Fraser making a comeback. Brendan Fraser, George in the Jungle, The Mummy. Um, Brendan Fraser is coming back with a movie called The Whale. And uh, this is, he is due to get uh an Oscar on this. So this was exclusively filmed in a, in a soundstage in Newburgh. Um, and they had only two locations. One was in, of Orange County and the other was New Paltz. But they spent probably nine weeks here filming. Aaron Aronofsky, oh, excuse me, Darren Aronofsky is the director and he's won uh, he's won Oscars as well. So look for that. That's premiering on December ninth. And Pretty Little Liars, um, we won this competition. Um, just so you think it's easy to get films to come here, it's not that easy. They have the pick of the Hudson Valley, mostly HBO loves to be here, but it's a competition. So when these production companies come, they say, show us your best locations. Where can we find a soundstage, which we really need more of? Um, where can we find a soundstage and, and where are your locations? And so Nora, who works as a full-time person in our office, she spends her day scouring around, trying to find the perfect locations for these productions. And eventually they narrow it down to two places. And this one ultimately came to Orange County. Uh, they were heading out to Massachusetts and we didn't let that happen. So they're coming to us. They'll be filming here for the majority of two thousand twenty-three. So we'll be excited about that. Okay. So now I'm, we're down to questions. If anyone has, yes.
I don't have any questions, but just to let you know, like, um, the episode that I did, my son also did, he got me intellectual. Um, there's so many people who came here from New York City, they bussed them in as well as the rural local. But on top of that, I work with people who are from Massachusetts and other locations. I just pump them all over. And um, I was like, should I change my house? It was everywhere. It was amazing. Like, you know, the information that they give you and how they try to find places is difficult.
Yes, they do. And it's, it's not, it's not just about coming here with a production that's finding all the lodging. It's finding caterers, having them spend thousands and thousands of dollars at a rental company. Um, you know, just buying in our stores, going to our hardware stores. So it's, it's not just about, you know, the glamour of just having a movie here. It's really about economic development. And if someone says to me, do you want a major motion picture or a series? A series all day long. Cause once a series is here, they would really start spending a ton of money in, in your municipalities.
One, one other thing, the importance of actually having places and locations today. You can work fifteen-hour days. My first time was fifteen-hour day and you have to be back again. So you get maybe eight hours to sleep. And the people who are working on it who are not extras, they're there even longer. So they're gonna need a place to stay that's close and then, you know, to back there.
Right.
They work really hard. They're in the booth.
Right, thank you. And uh, actually, right now, um, we're just about done with our presentation. I know we're gonna get a hook, but um, we are entertaining Marvel right now and they are looking for a soundstage. Um, and the last time they were here, we didn't have one for them. They were all booked up with HBO and, and the like and Universal. But um, they are looking for a soundstage and that will win them over to be here. And that would be a series for Marvel. So let's hope we get that. Any more questions? Okay, thank you for having us. Thank you very much.
Just a uh point of clarification from the public hearing a quarter fifty later. Uh, there are two parcels that are being conveyed to the town. Twenty-one dash one dash thirty-two with the full market value of eleven thousand two hundred and two dash one dash twenty-eight with a uh twenty-twenty-two assessment roll, full market value of one oh three six. So the total of the two is one hundred and fourteen thousand and hundred. I believe that's where we derive the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, next we have Tom.
Everybody, but I'm not following. So thanks everybody here and I'm Tom, taking in over there. I'm Tom Nasri. I'm with the town's history department. We present history programs once a month on the second Saturday of each month at two P.M. Right here in Town Hall. Last week, we had Andy Mills and Dr. Fred Isik speak about soldiers writing letters home here during World War One, World War Two, and the Vietnam War. And what was happening on the home front, and it was pretty good to hear local stuff way back then. The next meeting will be Saturday, December tenth, twenty twenty-two, here at Town Hall, at two o'clock to about three o'clock, only lasts about an hour. Uh, the presenter will be the well-known Donald Doc Bane. He has spoken with, to us before on several other things. He'll be speaking on reading the woods. Relating to what you see or don't see, and what you don't understand while walking or hiking in a park or the woods. Oh, and one other thing, I have a little history test here tonight for everybody. What brand of tea did the American colonists prefer? Anybody know what brand, brand of tea? Liberty.
Thank you, Tom, okay. Next, we have Public Station, agenda item zoning, three minutes. Want to start with Zoom? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience, come on up.
We may not sure, uh, sure, can I say? I just wanted to take time to tell everybody that we served about ninety-six veterans at Maddie Diner and at Tooties, we gave away a sandwich and a cup of coffee. And I thanked the committee for, for, for doing that, please be, uh, it was a plus. Uh, the dinner the other night, we appreciate everybody who came out. And, uh, I hope everybody had a good time. Uh, next week, uh, we'll be putting up another section of the wall in the park. Um, it's coming in, uh, it's all set. So, uh, anybody wants to come out, uh, we'll let you know, you can get in touch with uh, Councilman Mark Coyne, and he'll tell you exactly when it's coming in, how we're gonna set it. So, uh, we, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we're lifting tree a little bit, right? Just wanted to thank the committee and everybody, supervisor, everybody believing. Um, and I also want to thank the Hudson workers, because they gave their time to come out and create the woods. And they did a fantastic job. I'll talk to you later.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Well, we took a roll along the road, um, had the pleasure of being at the town board, actually, first thing I wanted to do is I wanted to congratulate the officers who are being promoted today. Um, had the pleasure of being at the town board budget work session, I think it was, last week. Um, so the town board for years, through fuzzy math, has been manipulating the budget by overestimating expenses and underestimating revenues, and in the process, overtaxing taxpayers by putting money back into fund balance rather than actually spending it on critical needs for the town. Every year you tell us that we're going to give money back, but every year you end up putting it back in the coffers. And in the process, you end up shortchanging the town employees on a fair wage, understaffing all town departments, and underserving the public by not properly maintaining and upgrading town infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Move on, correspondents, um, I'm sure they'll be there.
Yes, there's, uh, one letter addressed to, uh, the Commissioner, uh, Ingraham. The letter states, Dear Commissioner Ingraham, I would like to extend this huge thank you for supporting Transformation Church in our twenty-twenty-two tramp of three community event. Our tramp of three there was successful, one, because of community banking from the Department of Public Works. Thank you so much for providing the manpower and the support we receive from the water and sewer workers. It was exemplary and professional. Planning a large community event involved a lot of moving parts, and we were able to accomplish our tramp of three events because of the support and the outreach. Transformation Church is here to serve our community, and should, if you ever need us for anything, finally reach out to us. Want to be a thank you to this department, which I believe Pastor Joe and me will be.
Thank you. Next, we'll start with the resolutions. We're gonna start with number two, or three, then number one, so we'll start with number one, uh, number two. Can we hear it?
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, approving the benefit assessment role for the year twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, we hereby resolve that the Town Board hereby approves the benefit assessment role for the year twenty twenty-three. Presumably, on file, I'm Office of the Town Board. And the Town Board is hereby directed to forward the benefit as a new role to the public of the town in central without amendment or qualifications.
Some more. Second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Barrister, Ron?
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, approving the town water and sewer rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that on January first, twenty twenty-three, the following water and sewage issue produced rings and properties will be announced outside the boundaries of the town. Water and sewer districts shall take effect. Water in district two point ninety-five per thousand gallon. Water out of district five point ninety per thousand gallon. Sewer in district three point fifteen per thousand gallon. Sewer out of district three point thirty per thousand dollar, and it is further informed that the Commission of Public Works is hereby directed to not notify all of public town personnel and officials that the force rate shall go into effect on January first, twenty twenty-three for billing and notification purposes, and it is further resolved that Town Board is hereby authorized and directed to force public notice of this rate in cases to be given as provided by law.
Some more. Second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, adopting the town budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that pursuant to the Town Law Section one oh nine, the preliminary budget has changed, altered, and revised, and hereby adopted as the annual budget of the Town of Walker for the fiscal year beginning on January first, twenty twenty-three. It's inclusive of the individual fund base and allocation as the next year too, and that the stage shall be entered in the minutes of the town board.
Some more. Second.
Okay, Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, promoting Daniel Graham to the rank of full-time sergeant in the Town Police Department. Now therefore, we have resolved that the Town Board, and the Town Board is hereby promote Daniel Graham to the rank of full-time sergeant who served in their capacity at the Town of Walker Police Department. And we have further resolved that said appointment shall be done effective immediately. Subject to all appropriate documentation, he is admitted to and accepted by the Orange County Department of Human Resources Civil Service Department.
Some more, second. Question. We will, congratulations.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Absolutely.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, congratulations, guys.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Thank you very much, congratulations. For our.
Thank you, sir.
You mentioned for the, you know, the, and the, and the, sir, and thank you to the standing. Yes, thanks for coming. Okay, we'll see you, uh, Monday, right?
Certainly.
Next.
The resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, promoting Officer John Sonnenberg, the position of full-time detective. Now therefore, we have resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Walker hereby promotes Officer John's role, the position of full-time detective to serve in his capacity at the Town of Walker Police Department. And we have further resolved that the appointment shall be done immediately. Subject to all appropriate documentation, he is admitted to and accepted by the Orange County Department of Human Resources Civil Service Department.
Some more, second. He's the shy one in the back.
Uh, Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Absolutely.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Just want to say, um, John had done a great job filming in, um, the last couple of months, weeks, and great job, um, very well-earned promotion, to John.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, appointing a part-time court enforcement officer. Now therefore, we have hereby resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Walker hereby appoint Javier Rojas the decision of part-time court enforcement officer to serve in his capacity at the Town of Walker Building Department. An hourly wage of twenty-four and five cents as specified in the applicable collective bargaining agreement effective as of December five, twenty twenty-two, pending submission to and approval by the Orange County Department of Human Resources Civil Service Department or appropriate documentation.
Some more, second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker, ratifying memorandum agreement between the Town and the S.E.A. Town of Walker, Unit Two, to renew the collective bargaining agreement. Now therefore, we have hereby resolved by the Town Board, the Town Board of Walker, that the Town Board hereby ratifies and approves the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Walker and the Union, dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, a copy of which is annexed to this resolution.
Some more, second. Question for moment, good, yes.
Uh, just as a point of information, I was notified earlier this evening prior to the meeting that, uh, Unit Two had ratified the memorandum, thank you.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Resolution of the Town of Walker, adopting Local Law Number Five of twenty twenty-two, establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications for the development of warehouses and distribution facilities in the Town of Walker. Now therefore, we have hereby resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Walker hereby adopt that Local Law Number Five of twenty twenty-two, entitled a local law establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications for development of warehouse and distribution facilities in the Town of Walker. A copy of which is attached, here too, and made of part of this resolution. And we have further resolved that the Town Attorney and Sheen hereby will direct it to enter the local law in the minutes of this meeting. And with the local law, both of the Town of Walker, want to give due notice of the adoption of the local law to the Secretary of State of New York.
Some more. Second. Second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor, the run.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you Mercedes. Next, we'll have Councilman Comments, we'll start with, um, Councilman Coyne.
Okay, Starwood Highway, uh, for the month of November, we're picking up leaves throughout the town. We're also doing a drainage project on, uh, Placid Avenue and some blacktop patch. If you, if we've already been to your home to pick up leaves, uh, we'll be back around again. And if you have bagged leaves, please call the Highway Garage, give us your address, and we'll send somebody out to pick them up. The yard will still be open on Saturdays until December third, from eight A.M. till noon. Um, Veterans Affairs, we had Veterans Day just recently. Uh, attended a, a ceremony at Post one fifty-one this year. Um, great, great event, and I know that the rest of the board was at, uh, the Elks Club where Post eleven eighty-one uh, did their ceremony, I'm sure that that was, as it always is, a great ceremony. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about, I know Mike touched on it. The Wall Committee, we had our dinner on Tuesday night. It was a great event, I know the weather was a little crummy, and we, we kind of lost a little bit of, uh, some people decided not to come last minute. Um, but we did well, we had fun, great food, great people. Uh, raised a couple of bucks, uh, not, not the full amount that we, that we owe, but we'll keep plugging along. And, uh, we actually had a, a, this is our second year doing the dinner, this is our second annual dinner. Um, we had a new award this year called the Team Cody Awards, it's kind of like what we call ourselves. Um, and that went to Assemblywoman Gunther and Senator Scoopis. The donations that they made, I mean, it just, I, I can't stop talking about it because, again, we're gonna get twelve sections out of that money, and the wall will be complete. Um, I don't anticipate that happening physically until spring of twenty-four. But nonetheless, you know, the job is complete. Um, so we gotta raise some, a little bit more money to pay off the three that, that are coming. Uh, Mike had alluded to one coming next week, but we still have two more that are following behind that, they probably won't be here until the spring, so. Um, we still have a little bit of time, we, we, we owe, we started the night owing twelve thousand dollars from forty-six, uh, a year ago. So we're doing well, um, we'll definitely hit our goal, that's for sure, by the time the other two sections arrive. Speaking of, um, yes, that is it, I'll move on to comments. Uh, congratulations Sergeant Daniel Graham and Detective John Zonoffel. Fantastic, and also welcome to Code Force, Forceman Officer Javier Roiz. Um, welcome aboard, and, uh, beautiful thing, and so we've got some events coming up. beautiful thing. And so we've got some events coming up this this December. I'm going to put up my cheaters because it's really small print. Our holiday parade is December third and what is that, five PM? Good? Five PM. We have a menorah lighting on December eighteenth, and that's at six thirty right outside. And December twenty-third, we have a Kwanzaa celebration. That's at seven o'clock. But new this year, the Kwanzaa celebration is new this year. And also this is new this year. We're having a, uh, home decorating contest. So each ward will have a grand prize winner. The winner will be announced at the December fifteenth meeting. Grand prize is a four-pack passes to Urban Hair at the Galleria Mall. So to enter, email, uh, photos to Larry Cocteau at lcocteau@townofwalkhill.com with your address and your contact info by December ninth for eligibility. So that's something new, I think. Get the whole community involved. I think that's, uh, that's a good thing. And each ward will have our saying, who's the best in our ward? And that's about it. Thank you. Uh, Mark?
Yep.
I heard the grand prize was, didn't have to pay their taxes for that.
Next we'll have, uh, Councilman Johnson.
So let me, uh, start with building department. So the month of October, actually. So we have two hundred and four permits, certificates issued for a toll piece contract of one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Carry out one thousand two hundred and fifty inspections and double twenty-six complaints. Water is through, and as always, there are only two, and it's costing me every one of the three. And two service leaks that actually caused damage to the building. As always, the town residents, you can understand. Good news, the fire hydrant flushing is completely performed. We'll have it in spring. She might always discover the water. And as always, it's pretty much daily looking at contractors throughout the town. And we, we just continue working on engineering, trying to help when things exceed these issues, trying to do those correctly. One thing you need to do, so we started doing static tests on roads. This is going to be a substantial savings, savings in terms of energy. We don't know what static test is. It's basically just pumping alone. Um, monitoring rates will increase and rate will fall by a lot more. So it pretty much used to be healed, the one road being drawn down. So another one is the addition of pumping. So you can determine how much water can be removed. And it's something you want to do. You have models and precautions to kind of, you know, when it's coming to, you know, take the one road you're not, so. It's a good thing to do in the town. And, and this is the problem, it's the temperature, temperature challenges. And as always, the integration of the simple maintenance is a twenty-four, seventy-three, sixty. It can be that the county department. The monumental, monumental, outstanding invoices are paid. That are causing the area into being open purchases in the town of the municipal insurance. That all the places of the county board, departments have been very helpful in this process. More open versus many of the years. So the software company, the council, the waters who are coming, or in terms of kind of good to try and get that in a better position for next year, for next, to next year. Comments, I always like to say, I know it might be a little way to, or fifteen minutes, which is not a good time to move ahead because there's so many people there. So, you know, as an American, I think that's the most feature I think we need to do is help someone who's it's very common to see that the town turn up, you know, their people. I just wanted to mention, you know, this is a great thing to do. And certainly congratulations to the new Sergeant, who served. And John Zonoffell, congratulations Detective. And we are real honest to, for the fortunately certain people over too. And, um, I think I just want to say, um, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have a safe and holiday, a great holiday. I think you know, a lot of other holidays, we can assume with other meanings. Thanksgiving, there's no real religious time. There's no real reason to buy presents or anything like that. It's just to spend quality time with your family and your friends and have great food, so hopefully everybody can do that. Um, you know, I think that's, that's very important and family times. Probably not, there's not as much of it as we need to have today, you know, have that family. So I think that's so I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please enjoy your friends and family and everything and, um, I'd say thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Myers?
So, uh, I want to first congratulate Senator James Scupas and Assemblywoman Aileen Gunther on their Election Day victories. Uh, and I want to say I look forward to continuing our work with them here in the town of Walkill uh, in the ongoing future in the next year. Um, they do a great job for us here in the town of Walkill and, uh, it's nice to have them back. Um, we will be continuing to pick up leaves. Um, I've been getting a lot of calls about the leaves, so, uh, I just wanted to mention it again. In case anybody missed it, when Mr. Coyne mentioned it, uh, they are going to be coming around the town to get the leaves. So please be patient. They will get to you. I swear to God, they will get to you. You'll get your leaves picked up. Um, as we enter the holiday season, uh, it is very common for people to suffer depression um, and substance use disorder. Drinking usually tends to go up this time of year. Um, and, uh, people usually will ha- experience some sort of, uh, of crisis. So if you or somebody now is suffering from either addiction or mental health crisis, um, I want to let you know that there are resources available. Um, please call Crisis Call Center. Um, it, the number is either three one one here in Orange County, or you can dial nine eight eight. So that's either three one one or nine eight eight. Three, three numbers, that's it. Um, either number gets you to the same place in Orange County. So, uh, you know, please make that call um, and get the help. There are trained professionals waiting there for you. Uh, the Toys for Tots train is coming back to the town of Walkill this year. Um, it'll be arriving in town on December eleventh um, with Santa and his helpers. Uh, it'll be around, uh, three thirty, four o'clock. So come join us on December eleventh. Bring your toys and, uh, bring your kids. They get to meet Santa. It'll be a great day for everybody. Um, I also want to wish, uh, Sergeant Graham and Detective Zonoffell, congratulations guys on your promotion. Well deserved. Um, and it's great to have you here in town. So thank you guys. Um, and I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving next week. And if you are going to be on the roads, remember to travel safe and, uh, do not drive under the influence. And, uh, you know, as, uh, Mr. Coyne mentioned, uh, the menorah lighting, uh, which I started a number of years ago here in town, um, will could be, uh, here on December eighteenth at six thirty. So, uh, please come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. So the best of us. Councilman, I would.
Thank you Supervisor. Um, I'll start with my, um, police report and I'll add some things that the chief we want to add. He's not here today. Obviously, our staff currently is at fifty full-time, um, police officers. Our arrest record today is point eighty-eight percent. That's a hundred, eight hundred and one for twenty twenty-two versus seven ninety-four for twenty twenty-one. Our next regular scheduled police community council meeting will be seven PM on Thursday, December first. First day via Zoom. This will be an end-of-year meeting during with the meatcap events and towards the holiday season. While Police View Coalition, the next meeting will be seven PM on Tuesday, December twentieth at the Community Center, and it will be a holiday party. I'll leave the name out of here. On the homicide arrest on November first, twenty twenty-two, our detectives made an arrest and charged the person that was arrested with murder possession of a weapon after investigations broke that he stabbed a victim on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I credit the work of Police Department for being swift conclusion to the parade crime. Our thoughts and prayers are with the victims' families. Our K-nine unit, congratulations to K-nine Bane who competed his first competition in USPTA Region Seven Track Memorial. For this event, competitors had to compete and complete a track and locate four articles, evidence along the way. The track was laid approximately thirty minutes in advance prior to each team starting the search to replicate a real-world scenario. K-nine Bane did an outstanding job locating all of the evidence and staying on track. K-nine Bane came in fifth place out of twenty-sixth K-nine team on attendance. K-nine Bane also received an additional certification, certification and tracking from USPTA, United States Police K-nine Association. And, uh, thanks, congratulations. I know you've seen him out there. He's really friendly, but you know, he really does the job. Uh, and it's amazing to see him decide, and he's like a little kid when they're around him. It's really nice to see. Convictions, Orange County District Attorney David Pupler announced that, that on Thursday, October twentieth, um, I don't want to mention the names, Chief Rule of Northridge. And a resident from Walkill pled guilty in Orange County Court to an assault in the first degree under the plea agreement announced on the record. At the time that plea, that at the time, he pled guilty and after consultation with the victim of the crime, fifty-three officers will recommend that he served a seven and a half year in the state prison and five years of post-release supervision when experienced sentence issue on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Being indicted and charged alleged that he shot a man outside a meeting and restaurant and bar located on three eleven in the town of Walkill on April fourteenth, twenty-one at approximately nine thirteen. The town of Walkill Police was assisted in the investigation by New York State Police, the City of Milltown Police and Orange County Sheriff's Office, the town of Walkill, Woodbury Police Department, FBI State Streets Task Force, the Port Juris Police Department, the Hudson Valley Crime Analysis Center, and Eastern Pike Regional Police Department, the Pennsylvania State Police Pike County District Attorney's Office, and Orange County District Attorney's Department. So we had a lot of help. Um, winter parking regulations, please be advised that parking of vehicles with seatbelts prohibited on all highways and any other public property in the town between the hours of twelfth midnight and six AM, beginning the first day of October and each year, and continuing through the first day of April of the next eighteen year, enduring all times with more than two inches of snow and temperatures within any close twenty-four hour period. And this is to keep our drivers out there, calm and safe. Obviously, if there's two vehicles on the road when they're not supposed to be and parked where they're not supposed to be, these guys have to maneuver around them and it just becomes, um, tricky and dangerous at times to them, especially if they're dealing with ice and snow. For our parks, the new OEM office is complete and in use. Discovery office will be done shortly. Reblast door entryway has been installed and also the disease expansion. Currently, they're doing mowing and, um, re-cleaning up on all facilities and parks, prepping all snow and moving their full equipment now. This is the last weekend in soccer off year for the pros. In the season after Sunday, all seasonal restaurants are shut down for the winter. And they'll be starting to cut down some tree removals after the week of Thanksgiving. One thing, um, the tourism people mentioned about the facilities that are being used for the soccer tournaments. These are, um, our college showcases that the town of Walker Soccer Club sponsors every year. It brings in, um, college coaches from all over the country and kids and players from all over the country so that we can see and buy these coaches. And what it does is, if you've been out in these past two weekends and this weekend, you'll see our hotels will be booked completely. If you go out to a restaurant, you're going to have to wait because the hotel have all reservations and people waiting. And that's what that kind of activity brings into our town. Um, my comments. Again, congratulations to our new Sergeant Graham and to our new Detective Zonoffell. Good luck and, and stay safe as always. And Mr. Coyne, I think all the holiday activities that are going on, uh, for my ward, if you're tracking, if you want to know if if the week pickup is going to happen, there is on our site, on our website, there's a schedule. Um, we should be on week three, which starts November twenty-first, and you'll see ward, a lot of wards to be picked up at the, within the next two weeks. My other comments, uh, want to wish the Rossa family, um, who we turn her mom, good health and speedy recovery. And congratulations to Louis Brockier on his daughter and receiving her award tonight. Uh, the last thought I had is have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. You know, we don't get a lot of chances to slow down and, and the lack of, uh, of warning, um, saying smell the roses, right? And so this gives us a chance to sit around and be with friends and family and, and thank that the things that we have in front of us. Life is short, so. Hug and kiss your family and friends. Have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving folks.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not going to touch on a lot of things that, uh, Councilman already. Congratulations to our new sergeant, new detective. And our new CEO, co-enforcer, officer Javier Rojas. Thank you to Amanda A. and Richard D. presentation. They talked about that travel guide, town of Walkill, it's going to be part of that travel guide. And we will be in there, we will have a full page, uh, show, um, to showcase our town. I would like to thank, um, the Vietnam National War Committee for honoring at the dinner. Thank you. Post eleven eighty-one for allowing me to speak at the Veterans Day event. So, um, one thing I want to add is next week, we have a work session scheduled for Wednesday that is officially canceled. Um, it'll be out, uh, tomorrow, but the work session will be canceled. Uh, my comments. So today we had an opportunity to pass up our budget. I think it's important that people understand that this budget was put together. Um, we added police officers. We're in full vacancies. We added police officers. That's important. We added resources, which is what we need. And to me, that's important to be, get out there that we were able to add two police officers, keep the budget under the cap and lower taxes. Uh, uh, like a hundred percent, we were lowering taxes, we didn't raise taxes. And come in here and say that we're not trying to do the right thing for our residents down in the going when it's a lie. And it's a lie to put things out there like that. And it's unfortunate that we cannot pass a budget five zero when we worked on the budget for the last month after I gave it to Tom Kirk. That being said, I'm happy with it. We'll move forward like I always said. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And thank you coming tonight. Uh, Commissioner, and, uh, who's she right here? We have public participation and three minutes. You have something? Okay, I'm sorry, Tom Kirk will be speaking. Um, okay.
Okay, we just have an announcement. We just, uh, want to remind everyone that we have received twenty-five tags from the given tree. We hope to be able to fulfill this request. So please stop by the town's office and help us make this great holiday season for so many children and women. And also on behalf of the town, uh, you can grant you and your staff, we want to wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you Mercedes. Great job tonight.
I did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, now we start with participation on any item, three minutes, stationing, address, and want to start with the audience. Want to start with the audience because we started. We start with, start with the audience. I'm one of the audience. Can you step up?
There's a couple of things. I appreciate, and I know the residents do, all the signs that were up on telephone poles. They, a lot of them have disappeared. I hope, I hope the rest of them go down. And the politicians can pick up all their signs because election is over. And so, and on the round. And Chuck Road, a couple of signs have got to be replaced because they've all faded. Yield signs and stuff, and somebody can take care of that. I know that the guys have been out, listening to pot holes. They've been doing a great job. And I, I thank them very much for that. But I also want to thank our committee. The town of Waukele, Vietnam Veterans War Committee, fantastic people, maybe fantastic. They come up with ideas, they work with them, and they're a great bunch of people. I stick by them anytime I can. But I just want to tell you is that we, we raised a little over two thousand dollars at the dinner. We're still in debt for ten thousand dollars. So. We're gonna, we're gonna have a money drop at the Galleria with Santa Claus. And he's going to be there with his motorcycle, right Mark? And we're gonna have a good time with that. So if you ride by, slow down, just give one dollar. We really, really appreciate it. And that's the. Second, that's Thanksgiving, not Friday, but Saturday, from nine to four, we're going to be at the, at the, doing. The money is going towards the wall. What we owe in the three sections of the wall. So. Next year is going to be a better year, but I just want to tell you, thank you very much for all you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Hi, I'm Lilian O'Brien again. And I want to thank you for what seems like an impossible task sometimes. Preserving what we have, who we are, our land, but also bringing us in the twenty-first century. And one thing that I realized, my son came back from college and realized that he wanted to stay here, which was phenomenal for me. But it was an achievement in what he sees in our area and what we can give, not just in, you know, his nostalgia, but how. The area as a whole is moving forward and, and trying to make it like an economic sort of environment for young people to come here. So I want to thank you. The other thing is I met Larry and that's why we're running here tonight. I did have a chance to work on some of those episodes and what have you. And I just found that it was such a great resource to our area, that people who came here, and we did like knives out and all these other major productions and movies. And they're getting to know us. But I saw them getting to know Newburgh more or the Gipsy more and not the town of Waukele. And that sound system in our whole area, like the Gipper Pier Nine, what they've done to that is amazing. They, they built structures, they go home like cities in there. And we need something that's not, not just a sound system, but a real production area as well. I mean, I know we need slowly. But they're not moving slow. They're really looking to Hudson Valley. And I think the town of Waukele needs that piece of the puzzle too. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not to say we are on top of that. So. We're working on that to be a part of that puzzle. So I, I hear you, I understand you, and I agree with you. So we're trying to go in that direction. Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on the audience?
Lilian, our time flies. You mentioned your kid back in college. Oh my God.
I know.
So I'm here tonight because Waukele, we're not responding here and enforce the law since I have a lawsuit against my neighbor Mark Ford. But I only have a lawsuit against him because the town wouldn't enforce the law. So we're going to catch twenty-two right now and I want to figure out what can be done. If I keep coming here to share past and ongoing operations about the progress around that are illegal, maybe Waukele will address them. So some of the paperwork may give you references, a little bit of the whole deal. There's so much more, but I don't have time tonight. Get this to three minutes. So it shows you how Louis and Rossi originally banned a few, Mike, Mike, Dick and Boogie and my family, were all present when Mike stated at least five Waukele employees were employed by Mark Ford. This was all toxic New York City debris that can be buried and dumped overnight in front of my house that kept complaining about. Emails show Louis, Mike and Dan were made aware of the city trucks dumping on my momentarily, so in Waukele. They responded to me there and went to ask Mark Ford to use another entrance for this landfill operation that wasn't permitted. And they told me they had permits for it. So months later, the D C shut down the landfill. There's two hundred million dollar P K lawsuit, but the thirty-one acres of toxic filling from my house. The Waukele should have stopped. Now I'm going to have to listen to the equipment taking it out. So Mike Colomax stated they discussed the New York City debris dumping with Boogie and Daniel. Mike told. Mike said that town supervisors are private citizens and not allowed to go in for its property. So the waste from New York City kept coming in. Waukele later claimed they weren't aware of the filling operation until the D C shut down. That's not true at all. Everybody I mentioned knew all about it. So. The angle of the cube that sent Louis Rossi, I think, wrote, this is a couple of days after the D C stopped the landfill. Louis was very assertive, and I wish he was here to have a time for any comments. I asked for help in correcting the highway garbage road work that altered the center line to benefit Mark Ford, the landfill and in subsequent unpermitted operations. I showed Louis pictures of Waukele and Ford's equipment working together. Louis raised his voice, turned his back on me, and he cut off all communication. Little after that, code inspector Charles Russell gave me violations for both his issues. Mailbox too close to the road, landscaping too close to the road, littering, stealing, stealing cow locks, et cetera. My other neighbors had their mailboxes and landscaping just as close to the road, as well as the landscaping on in Rossi Road. He said the town supervisor showed him the issue with these violations. This was Justin Daniel stepping down and Louis was in charge of the town. So Waukele was also made aware that after there was some illegal mining and landfill operations, this is after the New York City landfill shut down and everybody knew what was going on. This violated multiple software players and supervisors again make excuses and continue. Let's see the emails and the paperwork. It's a long read. Okay, so George Toronto and Al Vance are now allowing unprinted operations on top of McCary Stoneford Lot, illegal landfill area. That's on Stoneford Road. They're also allowing undocumented municipal waste storage and transfer operations on Ford Stables Lot. None of that information showed up in the subpoena paperwork, so I should know about it. It's happening. As I said before, it's all legal. Please just show me documentation and I'll go away. If it's not legal, please address it. Waukele will stop all dialogue with me. So my only choice is to come here. And it seems that maybe some of our current and cast town supervisors, government officials, they could be incompetent. They could be on the tape. I mean, we can choose one. But as of right now, take a look at that. Eight municipal waste trucks on board property on a farm and are wins on the top page. Is that permitted? He moved material from there in front of my house and overnight to make room for that. Please address it. It's about three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? One second. Anybody else in the audience? One thing I do want to say before we do, we make a serious activation, we say people on tape and I, I, I like that. That's, that's a setup allegation. But I'll leave it on a high note. Even though no one else needs to speak, as you can see in front of me, there's some flies there and they represent the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. And on November tenth, Governor Oco issued a proclamation celebrating Puerto Rican Heritage Month in New York State. It was a little late for us to try and plan something today. Myself and then Councilman Valentine are both of Puerto Rican descent. Would have loved to have some type of event here to celebrate Puerto Rican heritage. This monkey observation will recognize the longstanding strong partnership. That Puerto Rico has done to highlight the important contribution that Puerto Rico descent and New York State. It will spotlight the contribution, social, cultural, economic development of the state. And how it has established strong foundation of life in the neighborhood of New York City and across the state. I'm glad you did this a little late, but next year we will plan something. And at the proud Puerto Rican, I am happy that you did this. It's a normal to do. You know, and it wasn't because of politics. You already have one of the elections, so I give her that and it's, it's good, it's a good feel. With that being said. Motion to adjourn. So, all in favor? Thank you for coming tonight. Have a good night.